Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Oscorp Middle School. We have a special evening planned this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We do have board members in the audience. We wanted to focus the students of Cleveland, not us. We'll be a parallel when you're on. What I have for roll call, I see Mrs. Dow, I see Mrs. Zahn, I see Mrs. Alvin, Mr. Batten, and myself. Is there anyone? Or myself, or Mrs. Alvin? We have other board members who are on their way. It is a little bit tight for them. We have a lot of board members who work and have young children, and I already have gotten some calls when they are on. So with that, can I ask you to stand?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting, which the official meeting will begin at 7:30. Before we begin with the awards, which is always very exciting, I would like the parents and grandparents and the students who are here for this portion of the meeting to know that we would like you to stay until all of the students have received their awards, and then afterwards, you are welcome to stay for the morning meeting. And you can be assured awake if you would like to leave. I'm sure the students are going to get home and do homework. And some of you may not even have time. I know one of our students was playing tennis, and I'm not sure he's even had time for dinner yet. So if you'd like to wait until after all the students receive their awards, feel free to leave. No problem at all. Each year, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, CAE, wants to recognize students with leadership, achievement, and extraordinary potential. In the past, they've chosen one young man, one young lady from each high school. And this year, they decided that they would broaden it to include a young man and a young woman from each middle school. Really fortunate and fair field, because the only reason this isn't easy for us to do is because we have so many great young men and women in our schools. The students you will meet tonight have been chosen by the administration and faculty in their schools as people who not only have tremendous leadership potential, but they're leaders now. And they make their schools a much better place. We'll go in alphabetical order, beginning with the middle schools. I'm going to ask Mrs. Brand as the board chair, and Mrs. Alvin as a member of the CAE Board of Directors, to stand somewhere where they're not in a triple inquiry. And we're going to ask each principal to come forward, and when we, or she, says the student's name, if the student will come up and stand between the two ladies, and then the principal will talk about why you were chosen to receive the award, and we will present you with your certificate. We're going to ask each individual from this school, so the young man, the young woman, to please stay, so people can get pictures if they want of the two people from the school. We're going to start the steering room this morning, Mr. Hattie.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. First up is Brendan Sullivan from Fairfield Woods. Come on up, Brendan. Brendan is an outstanding citizen who consistently demonstrates high academic achievement year after year at Fairfield Woods. He is often coming to the aid and helping friends who are in need. In fact, Brendan makes a point to reach out to some of our most needy students in the school, whether it's with a high five, or a hello in the hallway, or helping them with their homework. He's a genuine person and shows compassion for everyone. As part of a community service organization called the Torch Club at Wakefield, he works with younger children organizing games and activities. He's also very active in his church youth group and community basketball teams. We are very proud of Brendan. Next is Charlotte Chwinski. Charlotte is an excellent student who is very active in her school's Leadership Council as well as the basketball team. In fact, Charlotte is the only student in her current eighth grade class that receives straight A's in every quarter of every year at Fairfield Woods. She's involved in her community, volunteering at the Audubon Society, the local library, and is the captain of her Relay for Life team. She also plays travel soccer and on some of the community basketball leagues. She serves as a counselor to younger students in the summer at Bible camp, and we are also extremely proud of all of her accomplishments.
We are pleased to present Eleanor McCucci with the CAE Student Leadership Award. Eleanor has exhibited leadership skills on a daily basis through her interactions with peers and adults, as well as her service to the school and outside community. Last year, Eleanor was a member of this school's Level Board, which was a group who traveled to Africa to help build the school and raise money for various causes. Eleanor was an integral part of our fundraising effort for that project. She is also very involved with her church, where she sings with the choir, and is a counselor in the Vacation Bible School group. Eleanor also enjoys participating in ballet school and playing tennis. She's a very intelligent, motivated, and a focused student. Her stellar performance and achievements in her class attest to her ability, effort, and engagement. She has positive influence on others and a fine role model for all. Her good humor, tolerance, and kindness are among the qualities that make her well-respected by her peers and teachers. We're very pleased and proud to nominate her for the sort. It's also an honor and privilege to present eighth grader Anthony Johnson with the CAE Student Leadership Award. Anthony is a mature young man with many friends, and he possesses a great sense of humor. He's a hardworking, honor-all student. He's always helpful and willing to lend a hand to struggling classmates. Anthony also contributed to our community by volunteering at local venues such as the Enchanted Pass on Fairfield. He has served food at local homeless shelters and serves community at his church. Anthony was selected as a student mentor in our school's Character Education program. As a member of the Character Education program, he teaches our sixth grade students the importance of respectfulness, responsibility, perseverance, tolerance, and many other positive characteristics. Anthony is a team player and a leader in the athletic environment as well. This is evidenced on his basketball, lacrosse, and football teams. Anthony is committed to his education and athletics, and he faces challenges head-on. Congratulations to him.
It's really interesting watching the faces of the high school of new students because they're thinking, "Oh, freshman in my school next year." Tomlinson Middle School.
Please welcome Meredith Pelosi.
Meredith did not grow up, if you consider thirteen grown-ups, in Fairfield. She moved to Fairfield from Virginia and decided, in her words, "to let go of the previous seven years." In order to assimilate into her new home, Meredith became involved in soccer, the drama club, and Tomlinson's Chamber Choir. Meredith feels a strong sense of commitment to each of these groups, never missing a practice. In a recent article in Educational Leadership, the author wrote about those who, quote, "lead from behind." I believe this is Meredith's style of leadership, actively participating in her academics through group work that allows her to use her people skills, all of which her teachers have noted. She enjoys the exchange of ideas that comes from differing opinions, and the project that started out as a school assignment becomes so much more. Meredith is entirely dependable, cheerful, and outgoing, and she sets a wonderful example for her peers. Although she may describe some of the decisions she has made as difficult ones, that doesn't show on the outside. She's an excellent student, a well-rounded individual, and a leader who shows others the way by simply and consistently doing her best and honestly just being who she is. And also from Tomlinson, Cooper Schwab. Cooper Schwab has had several opportunities to hone his leadership skills, most notably on the basketball court. His ability to lead his peers goes beyond the average middle school basketball player, however, because of the way in which he thinks about leadership. Cooper says that his motivation comes from, quote, "influencing positive outcomes in a manner where people feel both confident and content." He says that people should feel good about their efforts regardless of the outcome. He demonstrates respect, whether it be for the game, the referees, or the other team. Cooper's strong work ethic has resulted in an excellent academic record as well as an athletic one. He describes himself as having "a mental toughness regarding his schoolwork." I believe his positive attitude is contagious and a strong component of his style of leadership. Cooper has also served his community through participation in hands-on activities such as assisting the elderly and raising funds for the homeless and the hungry. Cooper feels most content when the whole team and every member of it experiences success.
Fairfield Ludlow High School.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. I'd like to recognize two of my colleagues that came this evening to congratulate our students as well. Mr. John Honey representing our teacher ranks, and Mr. Joe Clay, our Webster Housemaster of the year. Please join me in congratulating Matt Fitchburg. When we look to nominate students for this award, we look for our all-around outstanding students, and Matt certainly exemplifies that. Matt is an outstanding academic student as well as athlete and leader among our students. He's completed five AP classes over his tenure with us at Fairfield Ludlow High School with a GPA of 4.03. He's a member of both the National Honor Society and the Spanish Honor Society. His athletic accomplishments include playing on the varsity team for tennis for all four years, and this year being selected by his coaching teammates as captain of the varsity tennis team. Matt also is engaged in volunteer work outside of our school. He works at the Wakefield Boys and Girls Club and is a member of our K Club, sponsoring many of the food drives and holiday donations. He's also co-captain this year for our Relay for Life team for Youth Against Cancer. Matt was selected by his administrators and teachers for the St. Michael's Book Award in his junior year. He also spent a week this past summer at Georgetown for the American Politics and Political Affairs Program, and was selected by that group as MVP of the Democratic Ad Committee Group. He will be our next senator from Connecticut. We really want to congratulate Matt. We know he'll do a great job, as he will be attending the University of Michigan next year. And also join me in congratulating Linja Jha. As the students at Fairfield Ludlow say, "If you want to know what's going on in our school, just ask Linja. She knows it all. She knows whether there's a meeting after school, or whether the homework's due, or whether there's a test tomorrow." Again, one of our outstanding students academically. Linja completed four AP classes in her junior year and five Advanced Placement courses in her senior year with a GPA of 4.28. She skipped Latin 41 and enrolled in AP Latin as a senior and received the Summa cum laude award on the National Latin Scene. Linja is a member of five National Honor Societies at our school. Outside of school, she's also very engaged as a principal flautist for the Great Bridgeport Youth Orchestra, and has volunteered over 200 hours at a local hospice over the past three years. Linja's also engaged in what happens at our school, serving as vice president of the Student Representative Council, founder and president of the Biology Club, and this year serving as president of the National Honor Society. What makes Linja extra special to us, she arrived in the United States from China in the sixth grade without speaking a word of English. She spent her first two years in our English as a Second Language program at Fairfield Public Schools, and within four years was taking the Advanced Placement Language and Composition course. Her counselor uses these words, which I quote to you from her college recommendation. "Linja seeks to combine the benefits of both the Chinese education framework of hard work and high scores with the American education practices focusing on self-discovery and independent thinking." We look forward to hearing about Linja's success in the future, as she will be attending New York University this year.
These students are so amazing, and I was thinking about, could I go to China and four years from now get any exam in Chinese, let alone an advanced placement? Congratulations.
I'd like to introduce to you one of the finest people at Fairfield Board High School, Those of you who've spent time at Fairfield Board have heard our acronym and our core values that the board stands for. A welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical environment. And last year, our faculty chose James as a winner of the award medal for the student with best bodies, the core values of Fairfield Board. So as we sought among the many students to select for this distinguished honor today, one of the things that came up right away was, we've got somebody walking around here who had bodies at our school. That is James Semino. His work in the classroom has been outstanding. This year, when we hosted the NS Visiting Committee for Accreditation, James was the natural choice to serve as one of our student ambassadors, who toured the visitors throughout our school, explaining every aspect of the welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical environment. He not only represented us quite well there, but the Fairfield community is very lucky to have him with his work with the Wakefield Voice Club, particularly Keystone Operation. He was selected this year as one of ten students nationally to play on the National Convention. His community service has been remarkable in all aspects of not only his school life, but beyond school. He serves as a volunteer percussion teacher for underprivileged students in Bridgeport. He has toured with musical groups, raising money as far away as Italy for earthquake relief, and has been a great volunteer throughout. He's committed to our school in many ways, as a member of our basketball team for years. Those of you who have wondered about Battle of the Houses, well, James is a prime mover in Battle of the Houses, having been the chief organizer of last year's battle and this year's as well. I could not be prouder to have a student of James' caliber represent our school in the many ways he has. We look forward to great things for James at the University of Michigan. And I'd like to introduce you to Alana Sharla. The award meeting is due to start at 7:30, and so I'm going to have to reduce my remarks on Alana, otherwise we'd be here till about nine, summarizing all of her accomplishments and for many reasons that we are so proud to have her as a member of our graduating class this year. I guess the first thing I'd want to tell you is that Alana has educated me and introduced me to a new activity called flocking. You all know what flocking is? Well, Alana invented flocking as a fundraising activity, leaving pink feligos on lawns who are out there. So, Alana, I didn't know if that was like a secret activity or not. I did happen to see it on an activity, and I thought, well, this is... So, anyway, that raises money for cancer research and awareness, and Alana has been very involved in that. She is an outstanding student, as one might expect, a four-year member of our Audubon, and just an outstanding student in every way. Her school activities, of course, involve K Club, our Ritter Act Club, our Focus newspaper. She's a four-year member of our ice hockey team, a three-year varsity player on our lacrosse team, a member of the Darien Ice Hockey Team, a member of the Bridgeport Ice Hockey Club, and, most importantly to me, a volunteer teaching kids at state. I'm not quite sure how she fits all that in with flocking and everything else going on. She is an exceptional musician, as her fellow recipient tonight, James, a member of our music program. Alana is in our Chamber Singers, is in our Wind Ensemble, and somehow is also in our symphonic orchestra. So I'm not exactly sure if she's actually able to sing and play the string instruments at the same time, but she somehow manages to be in all three groups, and is a member of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Heart Society. So this is an outstanding musician, and also has been working as a waitress on Saturday Sundays. So you tell me how she does it, but I can attest to the fact that she does it, and we could not be more proud of Alana, and James managed to university with very, very love.
I'd like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success, and we did a very, very fine parochial for our students and hopefully for our students. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave, have a very end meeting. for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you. I would now like to ask all of the students if they could please come to the front together so that we can give understanding information. Would all of the students please come back up? Thank you. We are very, very, very proud of you. We are lucky to be able to have you in our schools, and we wish you great success. And we did a very, very fine farewell for our students and hopefully for our campus. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to thank you. Thank you so much. And we'll now take a five-minute break, and if you would please would like to leave for a period of speaking. Thank you.
they wish to address this amendment to put it on the agenda.
Ms. Al, Charlotte C. Queensbank Road, I ask that you do put this on the agenda tonight to discuss it at the policy committee meeting. The administration said they're for this. The students have been noticed on the prom promise. Actually, I have two students at Level High School, and they both are wandering my board members in path of the policy. They're expecting to be breathalyzed. The students wholly expected. The administration has talked with them, so they have had notice of on the prom promise which parents have signed, so they have received notice. So I ask that you do put this on the agenda tonight, and perhaps talk with the administrators in the building to see if they can meet the timeline. Thank you.
And you have ten speakers to the same issue, the idea of tonight, adding once again more discussion, hopefully to vote to get breathalyzers into our proms. As you know, breathalyzer is been done, has been done in our proms. And I'd also like to hear comments if you choose not to make this motion, to go with the motion tonight, discuss and to vote to enact this policy immediately. I don't understand what would be done in our proms. So you are asking our administrators, and I'm assuming, to go ahead and use breathalyzer strips without a policy, without your approval, based on their subjective views of what the kids look like as they come in? There is no document, I've asked for a document on how the administrators are to assess how these kids look. There's no document, there's no consistency. If you're worried about rights, consistency, and notice, it seems to me shows me worry about fairness. The prom promise has included this year, notification to answer your question. I don't understand why more of that members have not seen information from the policy committee that happened last week. I know what happened there, I don't know if you don't. And lastly, there are devices that can be had, and they are available at $299 each for a small training. It's like using a thermometer. It's like they're used to grade at high school and have them with the years. And I also ask our high school administrators to comment at this point if they disagree with what they're hearing, because I heard from them at the policy committee that they could do it for sure. Would you please comment?
I believe that the administrators would like to address, so we can have them come up, but I won't before Dr. Clark.
I think it would depend on whether I let you vote it to put it on the agenda.
I have a procedural question.
Yes, Mrs. Vaughn?
Mr. Carey has asked to put it on the agenda. Is it on the agenda? Is he offering a motion that he would like to add to the agenda or discussion? I'm sorry, it's Mr. Lu, my fault. Is it a motion, or is it a discussion item? Discussion item, we wouldn't have anything other than a discussion.
No, it's a motion to put it on the, with the possibility, with the ability to vote on, whether or not we're going to, to approve the case. Thank you.
Do you need to offer the motion?
Need to offer a motion, and I'd like to offer a motion.
You must, you need to offer that you want to add to the agenda, a motion to deal with the issue of breathalyzer, and the language for the motion. Otherwise, you're offering just a discussion, which does not include the possibility of a vote.
Okay, so I would like to offer a motion to put it on the agenda for approval, that we put out our breathalyzer policy on the agenda for approval this evening.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Allen. I think then, since we have no further comment from the public, we'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further comment from the board members, in the immediate, two thirds vote. Mr. Carey, did you want to?
I have a procedural question, and I guess, as you remember, I didn't understand the president said. On the one hand, I don't have a problem discussing this super. On the other hand, though, I understand what we're doing. We have a discussion about, we just took one hour or two in the meeting, and then now we notice the public. One member is saying, we're going to re-district now, the two thirds of the members of this board will say yes, if we do it, we can argue this tonight. Now, the precedent was set in our meeting.
I don't think it's precedent, Mr. Carey, it actually, the problem is, well, that's why it requires instead of a majority, it actually requires two thirds of the board to actually put something in our prom agenda in that same meeting. In fact, there was something that Mark had not that long ago, this is past fall, was actually about an H1N1 policy. It has been done. It's not common practice, but again, it takes two thirds of this body to do it.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Tola?
The only thing I would say is, normally when you have a motion like this, that's on the agenda, it's not something of its magnitude, it's something where we have to get business done because we're up against the deadline, so this is.
Okay, if we're all set, then I will ask members if they are in favor of this motion to put this item on agenda for discussion and a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. People in favor, Mr. Lu, Mrs. Allen, myself, and voting against, or Mr. Tola, Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Ayah Pana, Mrs. Allen, Mr. Carey, and Mr. Fady. Thank you. Now, moving on to our honor of pride. Another, another appointment, sorry. I didn't have my glasses on, I apologize. Mr. Tola pointed out, we have to hire someone. We have another recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of a teacher with a Fairfield Public Schools effective July 1, 2010, and assign him as coordinator of early childhood special education. Mrs. Allen, second to my, Mrs. Allen. Thank you. And Ms. Leonardo, you're going to do the introductions, thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd just like to say how excited I am to be here representing the Committee of Individual Representing Parents, staff members, administration, building administration, etc., the law office. Introduce to you Kristin Downe. I do have committee members here, if I could ask them to stand and thank them for their service, they were outstanding. They worked incredibly hard over many hours to identify and coalesce around what the needs of the early childhood center were, and were in agreement and consensus along the way. We met with families, we met with staff members of all different arenas, and they really had consensus about what we needed in the early childhood center leadership. And Kristin met every single one of those standards. As we discussed and talked with her during the interview process, we found her to be energetic and really has the potential to be a transformational leader for us, so we are excited, and we look forward to July 1, when we can celebrate her taking over the early childhood center and helping us move into the next, the next iteration of the early childhood center. So with that, I introduce to you Kristin Downe.
I still would say this is a dream come true for me. It's clear that Fairfield Public Schools values student achievement and yet embraces the whole child. It was clear through the process that collaboration with families is central to the district's mission. I can't wait to start it, to leave the promotion as thoroughly titled of the center that I've not met yet. I have to say that the faculty and the administration that I've known so far are professional and passionate about what they do. So July 1 can't come soon enough, and I'm looking forward to making a difference, of course, we are, we will be on it soon. Thank you. My family, this will be tonight, my husband, Al. John and Joy down. Connor Katie, who is in Cooper. Alan Berry's room.
I would just like to clarify to the board, it was listed as a motion, however, with, other than Headmaster, it does not require a vote. If you would like to vote, because it's on the agenda, that's great, but we don't need to, but to.
Board members, I'm just looking for. But you're welcome, and we applaud you, and thank you. Now, we have a moment of pride, although quite frankly, we've had a few of them too. We have recognition of Rachel. Rachel Finlaw, Fairfield Level High School student who won the state Scholastic Art Gold Key Award and Gold Award at the national level for her photograph, Portrait of Elsa, which I hope most of you can see, we placed in a place we thought, um, you would have a good chance to take a peek. Rachel, enter for photography teacher, Michelle Herzen, who needs to be presented with a medal by the National Scholastic Board at the Laker Hall. And I thought, are you going to present this, come on up, please? I'd actually like to invite Sister Sarah here to join in. And award Sister.
And we have the K-12 art coordinator, Ms. Barbara Pollak, here, and she would like to stand with them too, this is a great event.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Herzen, and I've been teaching art and photography in Fairfield Public Schools for the past 15 years. And tonight, I'm here to introduce and honor a 10th grade student named Rachel Finlaw, who has a beautiful portrait that you can see on stage. This year, Rachel's photograph, Elsa, has been recognized by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers as one of the top pieces in the nation. Rachel will be awarded a national gold medal for her artistic achievement. Putting it in perspective, 165,000 entries were considered nationwide. 1,400 of those pieces were recognized as the best teen artwork in the nation, and 500 of those 1,400 were given a gold medal. The students receiving these medals are considered the most accomplished teen artists of the town of Tennessee. Other teens, other teens who have received this prestigious award include Andy Warhol, Richard Adon, Robert Redford, and now Rachel Finlaw. Rachel's teacher, I too am lucky enough to receive a medal as an accomplished teacher and mentor. Rachel, her family and I will be attending a two-day event in Newark City. We will be honored with a medal on June 9 at Carnegie Hall. Rachel's work will then be exhibited at the World Financial Center during the summer month. This is really cool, right? Rachel is not only a student of mine, but a product of the Fairfield Public School system. She represents the many students who have benefited from one of the finest, from one of the finest art programs in the state of Connecticut, and maybe even the country. I'm confident that Rachel's natural talent and potential was reached in part because of the support given to her by the Fairfield Public School. Rachel moved to this state just a few years ago, and her mother said to me, Kathy, over there, her sister right here, that before she moved to Fairfield, she never knew Rachel had any artistic talent. This may be a life-changing moment for her, Rachel found her passion. Not only has she made her parents proud, but she's made her teachers and school system proud as well. Please help me to congratulate this deserving student on his superb accomplishment. Actually, if the teacher would like that, rather have not made carry it.
This is good. Before the teacher leaves, I would like to recognize that this incredible teacher, every year, has students win awards at both the state and national level, and there are two pieces of work with awards, one from the Department of Motor Vehicles on behalf of Oregon donors that her students have done, so, yes, we have a very talented student, and we have a very talented and hardworking teacher.
Sam, the photo is very important.
Mrs. Allen, you wish to speak, I can have a personal privilege. Following the discussion from our prior item, and the issue of the proms, safety, and what the board is looking at, could I ask, from the administration, I know that they're already doing this, but in an effort to address some of the concerns perhaps from some of the parents, that we ensure or assure the parents that both at Fairfield Level High School and Fairfield Ford High Schools, that the headmasters are clearly explaining to the students, both in the assemblies that they hold, through the prom promise letter, whether or not it needs to be revised at all, to properly reflect what you would be doing, and perhaps letter, perhaps a letter home to the parents that will clearly explain what you would be doing, and how you will be handling these fences in the event, you know, in the absence of any other policies from the board. That certainly would satisfy our notice to the parents, and it would, first of all, set some fears aside, secondly, it would convey the message from the district, what they are doing, which provides notice for legal purposes, as we've been told. So if we could have some assurances that that would be done, I mean, I know they do that, I know that the headmasters need the students now, but if we can know what they're doing, so that the parents know, and if it's a letter home to the parents before this Saturday's prom, it will clearly state what they can anticipate.
And, and to Dr. Clark, and again, I believe some of that, I know I've already signed the prom promise, and I'm not aware, so please, thank you for your suggestions.
I would also support, because I do know that when past administrations and high school administrators have imposed consequences, and stiff ones, it sends a very strong message.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have appropriate minutes. We have the recommended motion of the Board of Education through the Minutes of Education Business Meeting of April 27, 2010. Mrs. Allen, second to my, any second. Mrs. Pauline Crone, thank you. And the rest of the board. The number, all in favor of the minutes? Passes, do you call Mr. Freddy? Thank you. Passes to him. Next item on the agenda, we have public comments and petitions. During this period, board will hear comments and receive petitions for release at the same president's meeting. Any single presentation must be reviewed to ten minutes, and audiovisual comment cannot be used without the advance confirmation of the chair. Board will not hear comment, many get big good.
Board will not hear comment, many get big, little, I haven't had one night on personal, on individual personal matters or comments addressed specific members of the board. Citizens are asked to comment on any holding items at the time the item is under consideration by the board. Would anyone like to address the question?
Mrs. Church, Amy Fleming. On behalf of the PTA's at Fairfield Ward High School and Fairfield Loco High School, I would like to read a letter that was delivered to each of you via the central office two weeks ago, and hope you've had an opportunity to read it. Dear Ms. Patrick, Dr. Clark, members of the Board of Education, we are writing to express the disappointment felt by the Fairfield Board and Fairfield Loco High School PTA's regarding the new vending machines installed in cafeteria. As you, I hope, are aware, 20% of our students are unable to partake in the scheduled lunch period in the cafeteria. We were under the impression that these vending machines would allow them and other students to eat healthy lunch and snack that they otherwise couldn't due to their schedules. We were told that these machines would house sandwiches, wraps, and salad choices, but also fruit vegetables and other healthy lunch options. Instead, what we are seeing is snacks with minimal nutritional value that don't represent a healthy lunch option, and undermine the important lessons regarding nutrition and healthy eating as taught in their health curriculum and at home. These machines should provide students with yogurt, fruit salads, and raw vegetables, whole grain crackers with cheese, a whole grain cereal bowl, or more healthy options and protein bars. However, they are given options such as Pop-Tarts, Cocoa Puffs cereal bars, and Rice Krispie treats that are heavily processed and full of high-fried fruit juice corn syrup. These are empty calories, but allow them to fail to help them function throughout the day, but will actually interfere with their ability to concentrate in class. These preclude us from striving toward our goal of combating the obesity epidemic. We, as parents and at the district, think that these are unacceptable options for our children. Our nurses report that they are treating an inordinate number of students with headaches because they drink coffee all day and do not eat. These vending machines are an opportunity for us to offer them healthy alternatives. We feel that this opportunity has been missed. As PTA's have been...
I'm sorry, Mrs. Church, we have a two-minute time limit. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation for Street Policy Number 3270.1, GIFT.
Good evening. The policy for grant, Number 3270.1, is recommended for revision by several regional boards. So, we have presented to you, in front of you, the first read, highlights several areas which changes today. And the one we're trying to make a policy more specific, highlighting a gift accepted by $500, requires approval of not just administrations, very specific, both administrations, that is the headmaster, principal, or central office administrator, and before the acceptance of the gift, and all gifts after acceptance may be reallocated to each school, among schools, to remedy clear educational inequity upon recommendation by the superintendent of the district. So, actually, three, each card, number one, the doubt, number two, that they have to be accepted by the principal, headmaster, or central office administrator, and then it gives the superintendent the ability to reallocate gifts to schools when there is a clear inequity, a kind of recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle.
I'm sorry that I couldn't read, I actually, I'm sorry, but now, we have a number of how many items of purpose every year might be, or exist, or might exist.
I don't have that figured, if we do have a gift to school reports given out before each year, most items are not accepted by the central office, but there are clearly items that are already accepted by the central office, that have been, will take on, mostly PTA.
Mrs. Allen. Yes, Mr. Boyle, in headmaster, principal, or the central office, how do we determine who would approve them, and in what instance?
The intent was if a gift went to your school, principal, headmaster, approved that, if the gift went to the district, one of the central offices, which would include eight central offices, and we're finding operations for education, for education, for base out of the area.
Then if that's following that, before acceptance, to ensure that the gifts do not create educational inequity to one school, if you're a principal or a headmaster, how do you know that the gift coming to your school is equitable to your county courts throughout the district?
We did discuss that, and we talked about having the elementary level, the level of the Director of Elementary Education, who would do the information, and then at the secondary level, another level, I have a director, director of construction, or myself, that needs to be presented.
Perhaps we could change the language to headmaster, or headmaster or principal in conjunction with central office administrators? I mean, someone who knows the whole district needs to be involved in the decision, so that we can ensure that it's equitable. Mrs. Kona.
Thank you, I agree, it should be headmaster, principal, and central office administrator, however you want to grammatically phrase it, but can't be done in isolation, but that's not how you're stating it here.
My question is around the red line, or where you redlined from PTA students, public spirited citizens, and/or corporations. What was your reasoning for redlining that? Because I, personally, it's my experience that the very people you're highlighting, even though I'm picking, or maybe cut it out because it's obvious, you're stating the obvious, but quite frankly, I don't think the obvious understands that they're part of that group. Sure, I'm just, I don't understand why you redlined the, it says all gifts and equipment, blah, 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 offered to the Board of Education from PTA students, public spirited citizens, and/or corporations.
Well, I think the rationale that I think was considered was that if there was any gift, it didn't matter where it came from, and you may exclude some people of that, but you should, but not on purpose. There may be other entities in town, like a gift, or any of these, I don't have to make a difference. If I didn't think of it, or if you thought, was it wasn't a need, a gift, it was more important.
I see totally what you're saying, but I think it is important to understand, because quite frankly, I don't think these people, I don't think they understand that, I think the PTAs think they're exempt from this. And I think if you outline specifically names of these groups, I would rather see, or I would recommend, language that says, and/or other entities that are, you know, discretion, or something like that, you know, adding in the other piece rather than taking this out, but, I mean, maybe I'm reading too much into this, I don't know. And then I just thought the other piece that you added, all gifts after acceptance may be reallocated between schools, only to remedy clear educational inequities upon recommendation by the superintendent and approval by the board. This is where I totally miss Ms. Godson, because I just don't think the language on that is clear, and I, she could have been able to rewrite that. I don't know, it seems like there's a misplaced parable or something like that. Not a very good English speaker, does anyone?
Ms. Jimon Tolan, Mrs. Allen.
If that language is important, Mrs. Ia Crohn, you could put, having a value, access to $500 off the two-year education, including but not limited to, excuse me, from PTAs, but that's wrong, that language, but my question, I guess, and concern is, I'm really for taking whatever we can get, and I think, the way this reads is that, if we have, like, an outstanding gift that's being offered to a school, but someone determines that it may cause an educational inequity, we're not going to accept that gift. I think that what we, so I'm not sure if that's the intent, but that's how I read it. I think if we have an outstanding gift that is being made, that we should tell the gifter, right, we should refer to who's giving the gift, that we appreciate what you're doing, but please be clear that, once you give us the gift, it may be distributed to various schools, so, you know, we are offering an equitable program to everyone. So, that's my concern. I think if we accept something, and we find that it's giving one or two schools an advantage, then we can fix that problem. The language of this policy allows us to do so, but the way I read this right now, there's a real possibility that, you know, the school, Jennings School, where my son goes, for example, I know five, six years ago, we held a big fundraiser, we were able to buy all, pretty much only overhead projectors for that particular school. I think, at that time, the Jennings had an advantage, I don't know, maybe they did that particular year, but in reality, it helped the entire district, because resources that may have been allocated for Jennings, the next year, the year after, we filed those projectors, went somewhere else. So, I mean, that's the concern I have. So, is it the intent of this policy to actually refuse a gift if, at the time, we feel, or the administration gives it, it causes inequity? That's my question, and I don't know if you can answer it.
That is directed to me, I prefer, and the board members who suggested this policy is that.
I'm one of them, I mean, we have the intent at all, I agree with you, what I think was, I know I saw, was, we're getting tough economic times, and when we do, you know, people naturally look for alternative sources, and gifts will become more of an issue. And I think, as a board, we have a responsibility to make sure that whatever is going on in the district, we are providing equitable resources. So, we wanted to be clear, as we move forward, that as much as we are thrilled and greatly appreciating the gifts, that also we still have a responsibility.
I believe, Mrs. Allen.
I have a question, I have a statement, a question, where it says all gifts after acceptance may be reallocated, are we talking about only those in excess of $500, or all gifts, even if then there are $50 gifts?
I believe, here's an excess of $500.
Okay, so this whole policy is only in excess, anything, like the reallocation is only okay? And then, yeah, I just want to make a statement about this reallocation, because it does bother me, so I feel that it would, some people might not give, or some PTAs might not give, if we're then going to turn around and take it out of their school and put it somewhere else. I understand equity, and we as a board have to, you know, share our money, make sure all our schools with our town money, everything is equitable, but I, I don't know, I think it's kind of hard to spell a PTA that...
Hold up, Doc, so we can, everyone in the record.
Thank you. Or I guess I should say, I'm just not comfortable telling the PTA, well, you know, like, yeah, it'd be very nice of you to give this gift, but you can't have it in your school, we're shipping it somewhere else, and so I think you might end up, in essence, getting less gifts by the PTAs than we have in charge, so I was just throwing that out there.
Any further comments from the board, Mr. Bailey?
To a certain extent, I think I would consider that, I think, one of the reasons that the language was clear educational inequity, I think the board had an obligation to do this, and that may be our obligation for this, clear and equity, I think we're obligated, correct, whether gifts or not. So, I understand the desire to have a gift remaining in school, we receive inequities, I would indicate we have an obligation, we're going to be able to, so this was an effort to balance that interest of keeping gifts in the school, if it's a borderline inequity, I mean, the presumption of preference in keeping it in the school would net first donations, and or gifts to the school, but if they're clear inequities, we would, whether it's a policy, this policy or not, I think we had an overall policy to make sure this inequity in the school, this school arrived, any gift giving policy. So, in essence, it was an effort, I think, I appreciate that thought of trying to make a gift in school, but I think that was the language there, plus that trying to balance.
Mr. Tolan, and Mr. Tolan.
Thank you, I think, you know, this has been going on since playgrounds, you know, for PTAs, and I think it changes everything for white students, again, this time around. And while I appreciate the intent, you know, I go back to when I was a PTA president, and we raised money, and I agree with Mrs. Allen about, you know, raising money for something that your school perceives as a need, and you purchase. And while I appreciate that the language is looking for the board to even out inequities, you know, you also, the PTAs that just raised $10,000 to do something, then the board's going to turn around and give $10,000 to the students that don't have it, that's also not fair, in my mind. Again, us to use town money to make it fair, I don't, I'm uncomfortable with that. So, you know, again, you said the language for clear inequities, which is vague, I mean, clear inequity in whose mind, I mean, are we going to look at test scores, and are we going to, I don't know how we're going to do that. So, I can't vote for this policy as it's written and as it stands now, and I just wanted to, no, I understand, but I just, I will not, as it stands now, vote for the next best comments to us.
I actually just wanted to say, Colonel, Mr. Boyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but currently, as it stands, that even when a gift is given, it's still the purview of the district and determined in the state of that location?
It is. I think one of the issues that the board members who presented this had, I think it was several issues, number one, make that known to those who do give gifts to schools, that it is the purview of the superintendent, or the Board of Education, to reallocate. Secondly, I think that there is a statutory responsibility for the board to provide equitable resources across the school district. So, in that vein, one could reallocate, to my knowledge, as long as I've been in the district, that has not taken place, there has been no reallocation of gifts, and I'm not so sure that there would be, unless, and I understand this is on point, whatever a clear educational inequity would be, again, is to provide equitable resources across the 11 schools, three middle schools, 11 elementary, three middle schools, three high schools.
All right, so if I were to understand this correctly, then, we already have a policy on the book that says if you give a gift to the district, that there's a chance that it could be reallocated, that that's our current policy, and that it...
I'm not sure that the current policy says that.
It does not say that.
I believe the current policy is that, which is written.
Which is before acceptance to ensure that gifts do not create, okay, so there's, so there's, it's unstated.
It's unstated, and one of the considerations by the board subcommittee is... And one of the considerations by the board subcommittee is to make sure that those who did give gifts were aware, namely PTAs, that this possibility does exist.
Okay. And it exists for statutory reasons, or it exists because it came about in subcommittee?
The proposed change to the board was suggested by a board member to the subcommittee, for the subcommittee to address.
Okay.
The subcommittee addressed this two weeks ago. Two members of the subcommittee were there, Mrs. Brand and Mr. Academy, I think Mr. Bo was in the group as well, when this language was drafted, and then an individual board member revised the language to make sure that people were spared the discussion.
And then we added the in excess of $500.
That was added because the original discussion was all gifts and equipment, and then we started thinking, we all know what PTAs give, and they give a lot, and on and on and on, from paper cups to new names. So, we decided to come up with a dollar figure that would represent something that was clear to become paper.
I mean, I understand the need for this, I mean, it certainly, it's difficult, and to Mrs. Now's point, it's come about really because of smart boards, before it was playgrounds, you know, now it's the smart boards.
Thank you.
I mean, that's really the, you know, it's called fate, that's what it is. I mean, there are some schools who've decided they're, you know, they want to give smart boards, and subsequently, some schools have more smart boards than others, as a result. And I understand the need to try and dial that back. I'm not opposed to a policy like this, I just think the language needs to be cleaned up a little bit. I like the including but not limited to PTA students, public spirits, public citizens, Not that I want to discourage gifts, because I don't, just to the extent possible, I think we need to sort of rein this in. I think it's gone, it's gone a little bit too far. It's one thing to give a teacher learning grant, it's one thing to give a cafeteria table, it's one thing to buy some park benches. It's another thing when we're giving one district a leg up in the technology area, that somebody else at another school doesn't have that opportunity to do, because for whatever reason, their PTA doesn't have that money, or their PTA chose to put their money in other places. I just think that's our job, I think that's our responsibility to decide, to help with administration where those resources need to be, and not necessarily the PTA, and I'm probably going to get a ton of hate mail in the morning, but...
We're trying to make people proud.
But that's my thought. I just think it needs to be reined in a little bit. I mean, I know, I can speak personally, I got a survey from my PTA asking the types of things that they wanted us to spend money on with the money they raised, and one of the things they asked is, do you want us to buy smart boards? I just, I don't think they should be in the business of buying smart boards, I think that's something we should be rolling out, we should be doing, and I don't want to get so nitty gritty as to say you can't buy technology. I mean, certainly I don't have a problem if they want to buy DVDs or something, but I think we're on the right track, I just think you need to tighten this up a little bit grammatically, and I would encourage board members to think about it, and, you know, consider passing it when we do finally get it all together.
Mrs. Now, again, Mr. Matilla?
Thank you. I just, let's make it perfectly clear that this board does allocate what is needed to educate our children equitably across the board, and what PTAs decide to do is above and beyond. I don't necessarily look at that as inequity. They might have more, so more kids at one time, but everybody is being able to use smart boards across the district. So, I just wanted to make it clear that we do provide what is needed for the educational system, for our children. And with that, I know this is for us, but I'd like to send it back to subcommittee before it's put on the next agenda, or not the vote. Thank you.
Mr. Matilla?
Just sort of briefly, I understand what Mrs. Iacomo is saying, I just, I do agree to a certain extent, but I don't think the goals of equity that we're charged with providing and gifts given by PTAs, I don't think those are too mutually exclusive things, I think they can work in conjunction with each other. I think, I think PTAs and whoever else who do certain things for our schools help us achieve equity in the district to a certain extent, so. But it's, you know, it is a tough issue, and I certainly understand, you know, the argument, it's a pro and con, it's a policy. I probably will support it, but I do need to see the revised language.
Mrs. Iacomo, I think that that's what we're working on.
I'll just leave you with one thought, and that is, yeah, I think this is an effort to sort of dial things back a little bit, I certainly don't discourage, and I certainly appreciate everything, trust me, I write an check every other week to PTA. But in California, it got to be to a point where there were so, there was so much gift giving, and it was getting so big and so grand, that they actually passed a proposition that doesn't allow this anymore, goes straight to the state, and then it gets allocated from there. So, nobody can give one district more than another. So, I just, I sort of see this as a preventative measure before things start to get a little bit out of control, and, you know, it's just food for thought.
Mr. Boyle, I may ask, just perhaps it would be helpful, as an example, because clearly smart boards are an expensive item, and we know that PTAs had well intentioned approached and are considering purchasing again this year, if you would be kind enough in subcommittee to have the actual technology plan, and what the plan is for smart boards, and then where we are, so that perhaps we can actually appreciate the impact this is having?
If you...
Thank you.
One other thing, relative to the smart boards, I think, I believe, because of the budget process, that there was a plan that was put forth by the administration to equalize, better equalize the smart board allocation based on capital expenditures by the board. So, the attempt to equalize it has never been, this is my experience, to take away, but actually to the board funding, or the town funding, to provide equity in those areas. One of the other issues that we may want to consider is the having value in excess of $500. We are truly talking about smart boards, or material, you know, equipment, materials of all kinds, significant value, I mean, maybe talking about $1,500, or $2,000, $1,000, we can pick the number, but the level of significance, and I think that was the attempt when we came up with the $500, to make it so that, again, it wasn't a paper nightmare, but to try to monitor any inequities of significance. And Mrs. Iacomo, I think you're absolutely right, this genesis here probably had to do with smart boards from one school to another school, and then as we looked at that and discussed it over the past six months or a year or so, sometimes there's a little amount of mind which...
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle. Do you have a board member sent any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I'm excited about the agenda, we have to raise to the top grant, we have a recommended motion, the Board of Education will be filing for the race for the top grant, authorize the superintendent, and the Board of Education Chairman to sign off on the memorandum of understanding, more than motion. Now, second again, Mr. Matilla?
Thank you. Mrs. Kattai Leonard is going to, is here to answer any questions you may have. We have sent you the application, we've sent you the memorandum of understanding, I would note that the, if we are going to indicate to the state that we are interested in participating, it also requires the signature of Mrs. Farinak, the FBA president. And Mr. Carey was at PTA council last night, and Senator McKinney talked about some of the legislation that the legislature has put into action so that Connecticut is never be able to apply for the race for the top funds. I believe we should apply, or at least indicate an interest in wanting to move forward. Many of the items with which we struggled have been removed from the first application, particularly at the high school level. Many of the areas which we would have to indicate that we're working on, or things we're already doing, and some of them, by law, we have to do anyway. The changing graduation requirements, the teacher effectiveness evaluations, we're having Cali in the schools, those have already been established as law with timelines. It's not a lot of money for which we wouldn't be eligible, but I fear because we're going to do these anyway, we should, we should go forward and apply for them. And I will tell you that not everyone believes Connecticut will achieve the funding, and Mr. Carey can correct me if he thinks I'm wrong, but I asked the three members of the legislature who were there last night, if Connecticut doesn't get the funding, if they rolled back the legislative requirements they put in place, so we could apply, we don't get the funding, would they take them off the books? They said no. So, we do need to do what's in the body of the Race for the Top Grant as legislation, I think we should try and get some of this to go through.
Dr. Clark, would you like to offer a friendly amendment to this to include Mrs. Farinak, as it was a teacher's mandate?
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Do you have a question?
We have the motion on the floor moved by Mrs. Now, seconded by Mr. Matilla, and are they making the friendly amendment?
Yes, yes. All right, thank you. To include, because Dr. Clark said that in the meeting, have FBA president also signed it, so it needs to be written.
Well, I understand that, but my concern is that we don't control them, this board is... That's what I'm saying, board.
Thank you, you're right. As long as everyone knows that the application is not complete without your signature.
Right, it's their own decision to sign.
Right, thank you, you're right.
We may wish we could control her, Mrs. Farinak, but we don't.
We're discussing this, the executive board, just so that you know, we are discussing it.
Want to take a friendly amendment again, to adjust it for the... Thank you, it's all, thank you very much. Any further discussion from board members that are very friends with Mr. Carey?
I think it's set, but this is going to cost us to sign up for this, and do we have any indication that when Connecticut doesn't get the money, we can unwind that?
You were, you were there last night, I don't believe, and I've been having conversations with the commissioners, that this actually, I don't believe this legislation is going to go away, and it's really interesting to me how this has evolved, I think you may remember, three years ago, the commissioners rolled out a high school reform package, it was not funded by the legislature. The first application for Race to the Top included high school reform measures, that was in the application process. We came to you and said, we can't afford to do this, and we're not going to get enough money to cover those expenses. They've since rolled that back, and so now, the high school reform act is part of the Race to the Top second application. I don't believe if we don't get funding, it will be rolled back. I think districts will be asked, will be expected to comply with all of the provisions in this. It's been on the books for a long time, it's something the State Board of Education wants. It's, it was basically formulated to reduce the achievement gap in the urban areas, and yet it's broad sweeping there. We have not been able to estimate how much it would cost us yet, and I want to wait to see whether or not Connecticut gives the money, and then if they don't, if the legislature would then go back and extend the timelines for this. Some of them are quite far out, and you don't have to start this immediately. Cali is law that, it's the Connecticut Accountability for Learning Initiative, we're doing most of it now, it's having teachers with the data, having that as part of the teacher evaluation, we're doing that, it's law already on the books, that every school has to have it in place by 2015.
If I were to understand correctly, the goals that we're signing up here for most, if not all, when they're being handed, if I lost it, would that...
Yes, it's, the Office of Legislative Research has put the whole bill together, it was passed, I don't have the bill number with me, but I can send it to you. It was passed, and that's what the three representatives were talking about last night. I believe it's 19 pages of reforms, and we'll send them to you.
Yeah, my take on the conversation at PTA council was that representatives were doubtful that Connecticut would be able to accrue enough points to actually get funding in this round, which is supposed to be the last round at this point. Their perception was that we didn't have enough aggressive ideas far enough along the terms of reforms. And we're just forming commissions now, or other states already passed that point in their amendment of things, so they felt that that put us at a disadvantage. There was some disagreement on whether or not they can unwind the laws that they have signed, that make us look more favorable, but they felt that in large part, across party lines, there's kind of half measures that are still being done, and therefore, we went, being in a very favorable position compared to other states. So, it'll be interesting to see if they do unwind it, but I think we have to face what has passed was possible. So, I guess one of my confusions is, is that implemented by law, or by PTA, why we're signing up for it.
If I could respond to that, we, Connecticut would not be eligible to apply for Race for the Top Grants unless we had laws to demonstrate that there is a push to increase graduation requirements, that teacher decision-making will be informed by data. In order to apply for Race for the Top, we had to have these laws enacted. I believe this has been good news for people at the State Department who've been trying to get these laws passed, and before the legislature would say, for example, in schools of extension, there was a huge argument about it, because they said, you're asking districts to do something and not providing any funding, that's why it got delayed for three years, it's law now, I said July 1, it's the law, is there any funding? No. These initiatives would have cost districts a lot of money, especially the urban centers, and so the legislature has not enacted them. In order now to be able to be eligible for some money, they had to enact the laws. And you heard me ask, play black, last night, does that mean if we don't get the money from the federal government, you'll, you'll roll these back? They said no. So, I think we should at least try, Connecticut won't receive the grant if most districts don't sign on. So, we could, we're actually helping them, if we sign on, we'll help them get the loans.
Mrs. Now? I'm sorry, any... Through the chair, to Dr. Clark, do we know how many districts in Connecticut thus far are signing on to this? Because I know from CADE, there's been some question, my information was, not very many at all.
That was the first go around, districts similar to us decided not to do it, I believe the second go around doesn't seem anymore. It's too early. I think we're one of the first boards to have a meeting to get a board vote, because the memorandum of understanding just came out.
The first go around was 61 districts.
Like 61 the first time, I think it'll double this time.
Thanks. Five million smaller districts, they just gave us...
And they're allowing the smaller districts, the very small districts, particularly in Eastern Connecticut, to consolidate and work through the risks, which has made it much more appealing.
Thank you. Through the chair, with the board, rather, where you can see what other communities are doing, table this, or board, you know...
It's the date, we have to submit it, we have to submit, this is May 19. Sorry, that's... Sorry. Mr. Allen?
A couple of questions. The first one is that, to the chair, Dr. Clark, you had mentioned that there is some legislation that's already passed that requires a lot of the obligations that are in this memorandum of understanding. Are there any additional obligations in this memorandum of understanding that you're aware of or know of, that are in addition to those newly enacted laws?
The law itself, in order for Connecticut to apply to Race to the Top, they had to... Said that they would look at high school reform, it's all in the law. The... What, because of the rush to the top, for the Race to the Top, to get this done, there will be a lot of details to be worked out. For example, the senior project at the high school and exams, they're talking about a statewide exam for high school seniors before they graduate from high school. There's a lot of work that has to be done on that, which is why I think they put it out to, I think that was 2017. And one of the things they talked about is that there will be statewide curricula in the areas where there will be the exams. Fairfield and districts like us will have to take that, in my opinion, as our baseline and go beyond. Whether or not we apply for Race for the Top, this has been a push of the commissioners, there will be statewide curricula, there will be statewide exams. And if we don't, if Connecticut gets the money, and we have not applied, we won't get any funding. We'll still have to do everything within the law, and within the Race to the Top application.
Just kind of meeting, have you done it?
I've done it.
Okay, no, just checking.
One related to this and one... In this memorandum of understanding, MOU, I can't say the other. It's indicated that collab... You're going to collaborate with the Connecticut State Board to ensure equitable distribution on prospective teachers and principals, and be a cooperative grant and so forth. Now, how you... What is the meaning of that? And is there a possibility that if we, in Fairfield, have good teachers, we do have good teachers, we're going to have to collaborate to ensure equitable distribution among the state of those good teachers? So that there's a possibility that our good teachers may be drawn in from our district?
It's within a district. And again, a lot of this is directed at some of the urban areas, where they have schools that continually each year fail to meet adequate really progress, putting their talent behind. This would... For example, this does not happen in Fairfield. But let's say that year after year after year after year, we had one middle school where the students failed to meet goal on the statewide test. This provision says, as part of the whole thing with teacher evaluation, are you taking a look at the growth the students are making over time? And if it turns out that every teacher in one particular school is not helping students achieve, then we have the right to, which we do by our contract anyway in Fairfield, we can move teachers for educational reasons. This is geared much more to the urban areas.
Another financial question now. This funding, if they may or may not get, is going to be a portion, as I understand it, based on our side of one part A, one frequency. Can you give me a feel for, with respect to the rest of the state and other districts? Is our Title I Part A monies a large part compared to other districts, or a small number?
Title I funding is allocated based on the number of children you have in your district who live in poverty, who are eligible for free and reduced sludge. Therefore, the R amount is almost minimal, unless you compare us to Wilton, Weston, Westport, Derry, and New Canaan. I'm sure you get more than that. The Title I funding is strictly targeted for children living in poverty. Hartford, Richport, Meriden, Muphaven, Willamette, Wyndham, Meriden, Britain, those are the districts that get the significant Title I dollars. I think our total amount is, the last time we brought this to you, we were eligible for a hundred and thirty-three dollars over three years, a hundred and thirty-three thousand over three years. It's been raised to a hundred and forty thousand. Not significant, not going to cover the cost of everything here, but it would be better than nothing, because we're going to have to do this anyway.
So that's the patient of the funds, even if we should get funds, which is going to be in essence a minimum amount of money.
Then it will help.
Compared to our budget.
It will help.
Question in my mind, there are certain obligations in MOU. Not knowing what the law has asked is and how they overlap. As far as the state should be, what is the deal of that? Most of this is a problem I have. As far as concerns with district, I understand the state's interest, it's good for the state, but being as we're one of the better districts in the state, we may be at a disadvantage of being a better district than if we would be, if we were not quite as good a district in the state, I'm sure that other districts in urban areas are advocating this greatly, because they have much more of a benefit to see than us.
But we will have to do everything that's in the memorandum of understanding. This is how this... No, no, this has become law. Effective July 1, you have to start, the time is clicking.
Tom, I think I'm on the next panel. Oh, you're second, okay. Mrs. Allen, please. To perhaps clarify or continue on Mr. Fattig's line of questioning, through the chair to Dr. Clark. While this has become law, and we would be required to do the items that are in here, regardless of whether we sign up for the Race to the Top funding. How much of this are we already doing in our district? And how much that we are not doing would incur costs? And do we know what sort of costs that we would be subject to? What's our exposure?
That's a great question. We are already well along in most of these, well along. We have not had a time, because we got this so recently, to cross out some of the things that we aren't doing. However, if you take a look, for example, let's look at Goal Two, data systems to support Under the leadership of Mr. Boyle and administrators in our district, we invited the state to Fairfield to take a look at our new data system that we implemented this year, so that every teacher has access to student achievement data right at their fingertips. It's called STARS. It's working really well. We're ahead in that, and we brought this data out to show it to them, because we're hoping they like this model so much that they will fund it, particularly for us, because we'd be willing to have other districts come and take a look at it. We're ahead of that, and it's something that if you really want to improve student achievement, teachers need data at their fingertips, and they need to be able to keep it from year to year to year, so that a grade eight teacher has access to all of the data on student achievement for each particular child. We're ahead of most districts in that. The data to support state and federal research, we have that. The Connecticut Mastery Test Group, the scale results into local accountability, we have that. Professional development, we know how to do that, and make available appropriate data. We're all, we're there, we've met that. You can go through each one and see how we're doing. What I will do is send you the law tomorrow. I will email it to you rather than give you a hard copy, because it's so long. And again, on some things we're doing well, on others we're not. And the law is such a comprehensive, then the Race to the Top, for example, it says, by law, you have to have two parent teacher conferences a year. You do that in the elementary, you do it for some places at the middle, you do it at the high school. I don't know if that will cost us anything or not.
Through the chair, Dr. Clark. So my question is, if every single piece of this is now law, or will be law, July 1st is a...
But some of them have very long timelines. They have to start them July 1, but they don't go into effect somewhere in 2015, 16, 17.
But everybody has to start them? We're compelled to start them. Okay, let me ask this question. Why would you not sign up for this? Like, if everybody, if everybody in the state has to do this now, why wouldn't you sign up to get some money to help you do it?
Right, the...
What's going to make people say, "No, I won't"?
There's a lot of... Well, and it's interesting, looking at Mrs. Farina, because I learned this week that the CEA is also asking their union presidents to sign on. What happened between the first and the second is actually, I think, a tremendous political Before, in the Race to the Top Grant, there were a lot of things that educators and the State Board of Ed wanted districts to do. And that if you applied for the grant and supported the state's application for the grant, then you signed on saying, "We do it." Connecticut didn't get the money. And part of the reason they didn't get the money is Mr. Carey says there wasn't legislation for this, and legislation for this, and legislation for that. So with a lot of collaboration with the Legislative Education Committee and the State Board of Ed, they put everything they needed to make a better application into law. So now, this is Patch Twenty-Two. You decide you have to apply for the money, and I think if you wanted, if you districts didn't, you still have to do this, and if Connecticut bought you the grant, you wouldn't get the funding. So the great political strategy for them to start reforming on things day one should be happening.
Dr. Clark, we're doing a lot of it anyway. We're obligated to do it regardless. There's no penalty for applying, so quite frankly, there's no downside.
I do not see a downside. The last time I did, but this bill has totally changed it.
Right, thank you. Any further comments from the board? Can I now invite anyone in the public language to address this? Mr. Dunn?
Hey, Alfred Dunn. I was flabbergasted when I heard that we were going to vote against this contortion called Scuffle Race Whatever Top. The last time I heard about it, it was not going to be tough. I am gratified to realize that you are honest, because you admitted, the first time around, you wouldn't bother us, and it would be a waste of our money in Connecticut. At any rate, ladies and gentlemen, New England without a doubt is a theory we have to hold truthfully and diligently to habits. Good or bad, change, the change is painful, and not the change is filling. The individuals that really are pushing this change, not politically, economically, the industrial mobility, and they're going to do it. If you are aware of the one issue that Connecticut is trying to push, you will realize exactly where the state is and past the goal. Those who are entrenched in the trenches are being dispossessed, swinging rattlesnake and stone. We are going to go into the twenty-first century screaming and kicking, but she runs in large. When in trouble and in doubt, do not run in circles, scream and shout. Thank you.
And again, any further comment from the public? It's a hard ask. We'll bring it back to the table. We have again a recommended motion that the Board of Education approved for the applying for Race to the Top Grant. An authorized superintendent and the Board of Education Chairman decided off of the memorandum of understanding. Our board members now ready to vote? All favor, require a aye. Thank you. I have Ms. Kehru, Mrs. Dow, Mr. Metalla, myself, Mrs. Saya Komal, and Mr. Fattig. In opposition, I have Ms. Zorn and Mr. Carey. Thank you very much for the process. Thank you for the record and understanding. Thank you. Discussion of the 2010 and 2011 budget adjustments. I'll have ten votes on the agenda. Yes, your turn. All right. The next we have reports from the members of the Board of Education. Sarah, who's your own?
Sarah, although last week and this week, we have engaged in exams, and it wasn't going well, and we're excited to... Also, our senior internship program starts next Thursday, 20th, and past couple weeks, seniors that are involved in the program, the meeting with faculty mentors, and I've been visiting their sites for the first time, and going on interviews, and so everyone that's participating was really excited to go on it, participating. And next Tuesday, or not next Tuesday, the twentieth, is our National Honor Society induction for our new mothers, and also seniors get their awards for graduation and get recognized. And with school ed day graduations approaching, it's been a really great event.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, well, we, seeing that it's a national field, we've been to give the exam ourselves, but just recently, we had our spring musical, the good ones performed. I myself experienced most of it backstage as the track helping out, but just looking at the rehearsals, the attitude backstage, you can see that it looked a lot better than two hundred fragments of the show. Speaking of entertainment, within our music department, this Thursday, our awards concert will recognize our exceptional graduating members of the musical department. And additionally, June 30th, our spring summer concerts. In terms of more academic related matters, progress reports are this week. Spring sports are currently underway. Notably, this Friday is the annual award looking baseball game held at Hartley Yard, and that's a pretty big event, we can get excited for that. And of course, we've been talking about this breadth of life policy, the proms are coming up, junior proms for us is May twenty-second, and June fifth is our senior prom. And last but not least, a couple weekends ago, a student at the ward, Aly Tykowski, and her mother ran a breast cancer benefit called Catwalk for Cure at the Brooklyn Country Club. And it involved students from Ford, from Bloodlow, and even from Bearwood Prep. And it basically brought all the kids together for a good cause, and actually raised quite a good amount of money. I was helping out with that, too, I was happy. I was happy to see how students all...
Thank you, Suzanne.
Could we just ask through the chair, what time is the baseball games starting?
I myself don't know.
It's like 7:00 o'clock.
7:00.
Either that or that's the 7:00 stretch. Thank you.
I agree, I can unmute this. I have a couple of things. I have actually been staying in contact with the director of CES and he just wanted me to review, he sent us a packet. And it covers 16 districts. For those of you who don't know, just an update. We include the Robert Regional Center for the Arts, Special Ed Services onsite and also off. 66 Magnet School, Professional Services, as well as Policy, Search Committees and Educational Programs. And relative for Board of Health report, H1N1 is winding down. They are returning vaccines. The farmer's market, they caught a lot of press. There was a policy passed last night. And there is also prep for summer school with the nursing. And they had a presentation at North Stratfield School, I believe, about head lice. And the Stratfield School Summer Room for the mercury vapors. The testing is being prepared for Stratfield School. And in addition, they also have school gardens, or excuse the expression, springing up. And the Health Department is working with our Central Office staff, I believe, the person who's headed the health curriculum. And they're going to make it, quite frankly, a review and a way to monitor the protocol. So for instance, that they wouldn't be using pressurized wood, which has arsenic in it. But they'll also work with the students and have them and teach them how to review it, make sure they're following the protocol. So it's quite frankly, a great additional over there. So the next one I have, four reports, these is now.
Thank you. First, just with Kate, I just want to mention how it was wonderful to see the student leadership amongst mine. I think everyone clearly agree with me that we have amazing students here in Deerfield. So it was nice to see them honor. I mean, they do the work anyway, because that's who they are. But it's, it's nice to give a pat on the back of recognition. So that was nice. For SEPTA, we have a SEPTA meeting tomorrow evening. Marlene Cavillula, who is the retiring ECC Director, which is already having a new one that was approved this evening, is going to be given the Friend of SEPTA Award at tomorrow night's meeting. So that is exciting for everyone. At our meeting last month, we did have a great presentation by Dan Crusoe, who is Catholic. You got it, excellent timing. Anyway, Dan Crusoe, who was our town parlay judge, a wonderful presentation on guardianship and conservatorship. I'm sorry. I can't remember the other super. For children with special needs, once they reach 18. It was really a very good presentation and I think relieved a lot of fears of some of the parents who, when they have younger children, they just hear, "What's going to happen?" Not 18, but having Judge Crusoe actually there, like he's the one they go before. And so you could explain the process and talk and ensure. I think it was a very beneficial program for parents. Next Thursday, I hope you mark on your calendars, May 20th, between 5:00 and 8:00. I hope you will all go to Friendly's for ice cream or dinner because SEPTA will receive 15% of your sales, whether it's eaten or takeout. And we have Deerfield PTA to thank for this because I guess they had the date on the calendar and they equated it to SEPTA. So we thank Deerfield PTA. They were giving SEPTA this opportunity to earn some money. And some of the money they have earned in the past, they are using as grants. They just sent, they've granted two recipients for a grant to attend the U-Found from Frat Shute Professional Development Program. I know that's a strange word, but they have it from a combination of the words conference, fraternity, and institute. And they put that together. It's a word, Frat Shute. It's July 11th to 16th. What is it, you might ask, because I have the same question. It's about enrichment, learning, and teaching, strategies for teachers so that they can meet the needs of gifted and talented children. And Diane, I'm sorry, Diane Aiella, Library Media Specialist at Deerfield Lodo High School and Tim Wagner, Special Ed Teacher at the Alternate High School, with two recipients of those grants. Other than that, we're just busy doing their usual things, like family nights at the lodge, challenger baseball, family dances, yoga, all sorts of activities for the children and for families as well. So that's all that, nothing from the Board of Finances.
Thank you very much. Mr. Braden, do you have an update for transportation?
Maybe not, maybe.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Saya Komal?
Finance, Budget, and Community Relations Subcommittee has met twice, three times. I know I lost track. But we are currently working on recommendations pertaining to the $3 million budget cut that we are faced with. And pleased to report, we got positive news this morning in that our medical insurance reduction, we were able to add $600,000 to that line. So we're now looking at $1.6 million that we can use to offset the $3 million cut that we've received to our budget. So we are working right now on putting together a spreadsheet of recommendations for full board review at our next board meeting. And we plan to recommend following the same format that we used last year. We'll give you a spreadsheet that shows four quadrants, what the Central Office recommended, what we discussed, what we don't recommend touching, what we recommend cutting, and what might possibly need more board discussion. But I'm happy to say, we're, given the circumstances, we're in a relatively decent shape, whatever that may, may mean. We are going to meet again next Tuesday to finalize that report before we bring it forward to everyone here at the board table. But it's been a very productive, they've been very productive sessions. Regarding Special Project Standing Building Committee, we're really kind of in a holding pattern at this point. Two of the things we have left on the checklist over at Osborne Hill and Sherman, just kind of need to wait for the weather to happen. Like, there's a tree that needs to be planted at Sherman. There's still some caulking that needs to be done at both of the schools. The biggest thing we're faced with right now are some drainage issues. Some at Osborne Hill and some at Sherman. So we have hired an engineer to assess that. And now we're in the process of possibly having to hire a surveyor to look at the pitch of the asphalt and the way it was laid, try and figure out why things aren't draining the way they're training. So we're gonna meet, I believe, the 24th is our next meeting because our regular scheduled meeting was Memorial Day. And then, as you know, the RTM adopted the town budget and decided not to make further cuts to the education budget. So speaking for myself, and I know fellow board members were grateful for that. And that's all I have to report.
Mr. Carey?
Okay, I'll start PTA Council, that's all right. Last two meetings since we met. An interesting presentation by PTA, that PTA Council, well, in the group that's in the community farm. Also, PTA Council has started a new committee, the Green Team Committee, to look at greened schools. It was going to be headed by Michelle Sterns. In the last meeting, a couple of auspicious events. One was that the transition to new offices for this year. Just very quickly, the president this year is Mary Ove. Past president Dominic Schardt, obviously. DPA Program's going to think, the DPA Curriculum's going to be Nora Campbell. DPA Leadership, Richard Jocelyn. DPA Legislation Membership, Tru Godley. Treasurer, Debbie Blanchard. Corresponding Secretary, Diane Ratner. Coordinator Secretary, Michelle Lindsay. And important head reps, Lisa Henry and Nancy Shue. So that's the officers for the PTA Council this year. We thank them for all the hard work and efforts on the district. We also had a very interesting discussion with our State Senator McKinney and two state reps, Representative Fawcett and Juan. Things I pulled out of that discussion, which I find to be alarming, is that this year was an easy year apparently. And they're indicating that we have a $3 to $3.5 billion budget deficit on a $18 million budget coming up this year at the state level. This year, apparently, the way they fixed the budget pool was they borrowed $1 billion, which obviously has to be paid down. So there is not a lot more room for things moving forward. What they indicated was how the program payments would likely be cut moving forward. They felt at this time, and obviously it's a new target, that state construction projects and reimbursement levels we receive should remain in place. And we should continue not to worry about things like Deerfield Woods, Stratfield, the profits we have ongoing in terms of that reimbursement. So that was some positive news. But out of that, and a conversation over the evening, which I promised some people I'm trying to be short tonight, we do really, I think, need to have another point and some serious discussions about governance, especially grants and monies that come from state federal level based on the Congress or those things. We need to look at that more closely before at some point. That's what I pulled out of that conversation. Facilities Committee. We're plodding forward. What, I think the big message is that we will be having discussions as early as our next meeting, on May 18th. The VDPAM for real schools, so it's for one of the parents that equals redistricting. What extent that is going to be, we'll start discussing. And I want you to make sure the public's aware of that. Additionally, we've been doing a lot of that foundational work around there. We have naturally approved facilities planning principles, which will be brought before this board and be some time in next meeting or two. I'd like to get those to share in my experience, so probably works. But Subcommittee is before, basically a template for plans we measure against. Additionally, we are working and having open RFI. Hopefully find alternate enrollment project methodologies that will focus on, in particular, more accuracy at the building level force and hopefully smaller variances over the long term. And lastly, at the last meeting, that was a wonderful report, which our team I know worked very hard on top of that, which is a description of alternate uses of space. If I could copy that and share it with the rest of the board. And I believe Dr. Clark is going to post it for the public as well. It's a very interesting document that tells you about all the spaces in every one of our 16 buildings where we're educating students and not necessarily ideas based. So it kind of gives you a picture of what our buildings look like. And the next exercise that we're going to be performing over the summer is to review the buildings and update our capacities for each of the facilities to make sure that we have updated current capacities against current rating. So that's where we're at in terms of foundational work against the potential plan. We'll have to get back into looking at our long-term plan and getting back into that with goals as we start things to roll. Along those lines, please, Chair, I do have a couple of issues that have come up in Subcommittee that I wanted to share with board, maybe give a sense of the body. One that I found concerning at the last meeting that Mr. Cullen brought to our attention was apparently we are in a relationship with the town where we can either use natural gas or oil, diesel in this case, to fuel our boilers in the winter. And what's happened is you switch back and forth as you have dual use boilers. As it needs to save money, if natural gas is cheaper, we use natural gas and oils are cheaper than we use oil. The last two years, we've been using natural gas consistently. And that's created a situation where we have thousands and thousands of gallons of diesel now in tanks that's turned to sludge. And this is a problem that's shared by the town is that our facilities also have not been using no oil or diesel. And we're gonna have to get something to thin that out before we run it through boilers that have no damage to boilers. There could be a cost associated with that. I'm not exactly sure what that cost is yet, but it might not be expensive. I gotta imagine a gallon of something that's thin out of oil probably even cheaper than more expensive than a gallon of oil. And some of our oil tanks are 15,000 gallons. So to that point, Mr. Cullen wanted to try to start working with the town. And I guess Mr. White would be the person to speak to and see if they can collaborate to find a way, at a decent economic scale, he was probably. And thought it might be appropriate for us to, since the body, have Chair send a message to, and those units to, just like, and sort of about this problem and would like to work together with the town to try to find economical ways of legal.
I have a question. The long-range facility plan and also the document I think that you have, would both of those be ready for a Friday package, for instance, this week? So that we could send it out to...
This document here, I believe, is complete and will be ready. The long-range facility plan is a, is basically a rolling progress of...
Did you have one that you approved?
The, I'm sorry, the proposals, yes. Those are yes.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you very much. And relative to the latter, which is the issue that the anti-governor members would like, what I'm thinking about is if we could ask Mr. Cullen to, when you do need, if board members are in agreement with this, could you please come back to the board and give us an estimate of what we think this is going to cost? Because clearly we are concerned. Is do board members share that they are, are they comfortable? Do I have a sense of the body that that's appropriate? And I'm seeing none in kids.
Yeah, I do, but I...
And Susan, can you speak to that?
In order to make this, make the town understand, I think something needs to be done writing to the personal, what the track was, whether you want, Mr. Cullen. That is what we're discussing. Just send a letter, is that okay with everyone? That's the question.
Mr. Cullen, did you want to have, we can actually send a letter and if board is comfortable with it, I'll share it with board members and we'll sign it if that's okay.
And I think, you know, there's, there's two bigger issues here. One is, is that we're somewhat at mercy of the town's direction in terms of fuelable use. My concern is the money we might have saved all those two years by running natural gas, we might have to pay back threefold, I don't know what dollars are here. So we need to find a way to consider some of these things. And then the other thing is, since we are in a financial discussion right now, if this is going to be a big ticket item, we would consider that in the budget process. So, you know, I don't know if this is going to cost us $1,000, $100,000 to fix this problem. But we probably should have something by which we could, Mr. Cullen, budget. So that's as a private attempt to ask you to switch to oil and buy this or sell it to thin diesel tanks.
May I ask a question, Mr. Cullen? Oh, thank you. I figured that the Board of Education is responsible for roughly, what, 17 buildings? And how many is the town?
Sixteen school buildings. The town areas is done a different way.
Oh, is, all right, so we're not responsible for 17?
Hill, Hill burns gas only. They have a small 250 gallon of oil per burn. And I don't want to sound like a pointy finger. I don't want anybody realizing we were going to burn gas for so long. We did two full years and if the price of oil going up, I would imagine we're going to have to winter burn gas again. And was brought to our attention by two different contractors that are doing testing, preventing agents on our boilers and another company that's doing testing and preventing agents on our fuel effluents. That this oil underground is sitting there a long time. Just to get a little history, gas burns cleaner than oil does. So when you switch to gas, it's actually cleaner, it's cleaner, the boiler's cleaner, the chimney's, oil's a little dirtier. And there's a certain, when we switch to oil, thousands of gallons of oil has been sitting 23 years. I don't have all the answers yet. A lot of people investigating. If we could add anything to oil, what that costs. Somebody had mentioned at one time that we sell oil, it pumps back out. But I can't imagine if we want to buy oil knowing it's been sitting 23 years even. Hey, do something to it.
to do something to it. So we're still investigating, getting trying to get all the answers together, and we have to come back to the board.
Do you have a sense of a timing of that? Are we having our next meeting, it's May 25th, or are we looking at June 8?
I would say probably by June.
And do you know our other municipalities and counties the same?
I had Dave Fryer, Paul Rich White, and Steve, he also said they were concerned, and talked to their contractors, they say whatever the town goes, we do, we do, we do, we have.
I meant actually other municipalities besides County Fairfield.
No, I haven't, I didn't make that far.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carey?
So, I mean, that was, that was the big ticket item. We have a couple other issues that we're still waiting to respond on, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, I believe we had one letter, and it was about the building committee, Sherman at Osborne Hill, and the other?
So, yeah, framing for the board members, earlier in the year, we cut $6 million out of our capital plan, and part of our plan moving forward is, the district needs to understand what our exposure is going to be, A, if we're going to build a community state, St. Andrews, and B, what the cost is for planning purposes. We made a request in the first election for that information, we got a response, but it really didn't give us all the information it needs, so we're hoping that we can go back and kind of ask for some more specific information, take into the cost, and we had some assurances that we're going to release renewed, which is good, but for some reason that doesn't happen, that creates, at this point, fire going forward, our midstream team, we have basically 13 months left, we have to cut down high school, or relocate that whole, I suppose, that's a wonder. The other issue is, is that we have an outstanding request for capital improvement at Sherman, which is part of the project that's not completed, Sherman, but we've had no response to this stuff, and that, and that was a problem with the front of the year, so I think that we at this point need to go back and do exactly something that wasn't our long-term plan. I was saying, security issues there, as well as cafeteria, same problem that was, I don't know, this, I don't know, Sherman, these are those core issues, I think that we're handling, and we're trying to answer.
And my other question for you is, there's a timing issue with the central office space that we need to be aware of, because I believe we have to give the town, or the town has to give us notice as to, it's a timing, it isn't just when it's up, there's a lead time, can I ask you?
Yeah, I'll go to the central office staff to find it. My understanding is, is that the owner of the building, we own the fourth floor, and we, if there's an option to buy that back, and if that happens, then we have a certain period of time that we move out, or we decide, or a window on that, if we were.
My understanding, the contract for central office of 512 Highway, is that the owner has the right to buy that space.
Right.
For the money we spend on the renovations and the lease for the 10 years. The caveat is that 18 months before the lease is up, or that option is up, we have the right to talk to the owner of the building about renegotiating the new lease, or our other options.
We're talking 2012, so how close are we to that?
I'd be, I'm looking at May or June 2011, we would allow to be talking to the first election, the doctor for show.
Isn't the, isn't the term in 2012, or is it 2011?
No, it ends July 1st, 2012.
Eighteen months back, would be December, December 2011?
Yeah, it's coming up.
So this year, so we need to engage, so, we moved in in December, but the lease started July 4th, and making new renovations in the office space. So we need to get the town engaged in that conversation with our intent by end of the year?
Yes, and last September, September 19, I talked to the first elect a little bit about it, you felt we had a very good relationship with the owner, and at the time, Wade, Wade, we are, again, we're going to close the, this is a, this is a conversation that happens.
So Cullen, will the model, this is some committee, if you have the next meeting?
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, if board members are comfortable with regard to these three issues, if I do a follow-up, and again, in writing, copy board members, do I have? Thank you, I can see heads now, anyone's.
Can I just ask you to CC the entire board's vote on the Sherman project?
Okay.
Make sure that it's left in stanic, it's left on wash, it's got to be like.
Sorry, Mr. Carey?
I believe that's all I have.
That's enough. Thank you. Mr. Lou, here come Lou.
I have to apologize, I misplaced my notes on Fairfield, I had some, without putting you guys on the spot. Could you fill in a little bit for me? Yeah, you're right. Before I get, uh, bring it up, please, sir. Thank you.
The Fairfield Woods Middle School Building Committee is investigating procedures for the planning zones in the site, where they had some proposed dates, proposed phone, but they're not ready yet. The last meeting, we interviewed, the CM, who were done, and the CM will pick for the projects, and do a lengthy process, so nothing construction to pick, it's also a distraction. Most of the designing work is on the way, and in progress, engineers are on board, and paying for the site work, and that's going to be what's involved, and in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Matos, Jack?
Yeah, we're briefly, the summary that week, our package is really good, so I'm going to repeat it for the benefit of the public, just some highlights, it's really moving along at Draft Field, if you go by, the frames up, or they're, they have brick up. The highlights of the meeting last week were, there was concern about four classrooms facing the construction, and you can't open the windows because of dust and noise, and so the building committee approved four-year conditioning units for those classrooms. The cornerstone's going to be donated by the mason, and they're figuring out what they're going to put on it. There was a discussion at the last meeting about whether they wanted to install a chith fort this summer, but it was decided that they would wait, because there was a concern about whether it would be time for school to be open, so they decided until we go next year, they'll definitely have plenty of time. And then the Phase Five, which the FFNE is outbid, the highlight, the construction insurance commission, the higher, was commissioned to hire an independent roofing company just to inspect the roof at this point, those are the highlights.
Mrs. Allen?
Thank you. Sorry, I missed the last policy meeting, sounded like, the first one, I missed it a very, very long time, it's pretty exciting, but, next meeting is June 2nd. First one I may ever miss, thank you. High School Scholarship Foundation held a first-time women's night out, had a community theater, very well-received, raised a lot of money, the scholarship foundation, we are still thinking about maybe doing it on our excellence in the fall, so that would be a little bit of shame as well. And we are currently interviewing high school students for scholarships, so we've got S5, a couple of them here. As far as Prax Rec, we meet tomorrow night, 6:00 to 6:00, next Thursday morning. Also, Fairfield Lobo High School, just to say this, overlooked, the user name is called, is fabulous, fabulous, fabulous client, and that's what they have for Hill Barons today.
And next thing on the agenda, we have open for discussion with reducture issues. Okay. And Mrs. Allen, you as well?
I just wanted to bring up something that a member of the public brought up tonight, which is the vending machines that went in. Can we just get a report as to?
But I already put that in my notes, I can read it, all the SNAP items, Christopher, they were on the state approved list, but I think they've all been pulled. The ones like the Rice Krispies and everything, I'll check with, I know Mr. Cullen, that this is, this package about that, so I believe they were all pulled.
Okay, so now we're.
The intent was, they have vending machines, they did, I believe, the top row, they have some SNAP items.
Okay.
And then, we had some problems with the machines, they wrote down, so they were going to help you, to the body.
Okay.
So the SNAP stuff, remaining, I think.
The problem at Fairfield Lobo High School was that the vending machines were made for us so that students could punch in their code and get their SNAP, and their account would be charged. And so we had some very creative, great, innovative students, just keep punching until they got a code. And a child at the middle school got an exorbitant bill, because once they knew that this particular code would release all these SNPs. So that machine is out of commission, and the company's trying to produce a machine that would be student-proof.
We did, that's actually called?
So that's why it was out of commission for a while.
Okay, so the SNAP, I hope the SNAP is still alive, you can get it for free.
Okay, so why did we put the vending machines in?
Many of our students do not have an opportunity to have lunch.
Okay, so this was any?
And so, this is actually bundled meals, you could buy a wrap with an apple, get some milk, there were yogurt, there were vegetables, fruits, and this way, students were either using it to buy lunch, or if they were on their way to an athletic event, they could grab something from the machine.
Okay, great. We do like. Thank you. Because of the Rice Krispie treat, took the apples?
The idea is that you walk on.
Grabbing.
They don't sound like a cookie, do they?
No.
No.
Shh. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
I just wanted to take this opportunity, we don't have a lot of people left in the audience, but to let everybody know that on June 10th, we are having a party in Fairfield for a certain somebody, sitting at the other end of the table. And we'll be celebrating Dr. Clark's eight years here in Fairfield, and a retirement party. And for anyone who is in the audience and hasn't heard about it, we will be getting a press release out to the papers, as in addition to all the invitations that went out, so that, but if anyone does have any information, they could contact me through the, my board email address, if they want information. And to note that the beneficiaries of the party, as well as being able to celebrate Dr. Clark's time with us and her commitment to us, are the two foundations, one, the High School Scholarship Foundation, will be receiving a gift in her honor, and also the Fairfield Education Foundation, which has been newly founded, and because of Dr. Clark's vision, it is something she's spent quite a long time working on, establishing, and so it too will be one of the beneficiaries of the evening. And just wanted to let everyone know, if they haven't heard, but that is June 10th, and it will be at Fairfield University.
Hey, Nate, where are you? I just mentioned that Dr. Clark and I met Thursday afternoon to discuss primarily transition issues, and if Dr. Clark had anything in particular that she wanted to see on the agenda over the next several board meetings, as well as things that the board could do, or I could give this chair to help facilitate the process to that end. I know that Dr. Tittle did want to have board members involved in a roles and responsibilities CAE program, and I have asked board members to please just let me know what their vacation schedules look like, to see whether or not it's something that's even possible. Also, I know Dr. Tittle was aware of our budget updates, he's been staying in contact with Dr. Clark, and he has been, vacation coming down, and getting oriented. I also, I talked with Beverly, and he is now receiving our Friday package as well. But if anyone has any suggestions, please let me know, if you think it would be something that would be helpful, I'd be more than happy to take care of it. So, we got our, are there any others? Oh, Mrs. Allen, is the area, I should go in. I have, do I have a motion to adjourn, it's been done, do I have this second, Mrs. Sidekoma, all in favor?